Welcome, everyone. We have some meeting minutes to approve, and that would be from our July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen. We're scheduled to call meeting. If there's any additions or corrections, we will need a motion to have it approved.
I'll make the motion to approve them.
Motion on the floor by Don and seconded by Mary. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Agenda this evening?
We're going to add an update on the abatement.
Building.
No, we need to rule the treasurer's report.
What was that?
We need to rule the treasurer's report.
Okay. Did we want to put the hiring of our new city administrator?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we'll put that down under building permits. In the building, we will squeeze in right after that. That's okay with you guys. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? If not, we will need a motion to have the agenda approved.
Make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Stephanie.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mary. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. First item on the agenda is our temporary family dwelling law update. Uh, we had, uh, had a public hearing before our meeting this evening. Um, didn't get much of a turnout of folks here, but, uh, um, we did get a couple individuals. So, um, I heard some feedback, uh, from some of our residents regarding, um, this, uh, new law, which will take effect, uh, September first of this year unless the city decides they want to opt out. So, I think I'll open it up to discussion amongst council members and do a little feedback where you guys understand it. So, we know whether or not to move forward, uh, with doing nothing. And that will, uh, allow the law to come into effect September first or to opt out of it today. Um, it will be effective immediately and upon the, um, published, uh, date of, of the document, so, um...
I think we had a lot of good discussion, um, from the meeting before, a lot of concerns about what this meant. Um, I think a lot of my concerns and a couple of people here at the hearing were is that this temporary dwelling would be moved in not for the person that is taking care of the ill person. It would be a temporary dwelling that the ill person will, will live in. And when you look at what, what type of a building could be moved in for that, it is not anything that would be good for a handicapped, sick person. And you're moving in a temporary building on a private property, and what are you doing for portable water and sewer? Um, you're looking at setbacks and what that means within a lot of our smaller lots, would they mean setbacks? Um, a lot of healthcare or health, uh, and welfare, fire code issues, things like that for the people. I think there were just a lot of concerns that there should be, could be better options for people to take care of their ill relatives than something like this.
Yeah, and along with that, we have places that are in town that are able to help with, with any sick individuals. So, um, I guess in my opinion, why we should opting out, I would be in favor or, or make the vote to opt out.
I also agree that we should opt out and to get, um, have conversations with some community people regarding it. I mean, I also brought it to my attention that a lot of the other cities are also opting out. It's too new. There's just too many things involved with it. Um, three hundred square feet is what they would be providing. And if you're right, sewer and water, wherever that come from, it's not handicapped accessible. And we do have the availability of lots of care in our community, so I, I would opt out.
And I, you know, and I think we talked to, you know, our ordinances and things like that. I think you brought up Bob, too, you know, just different things within what the city, can it desolate, public do?
Yeah, it's kind of common productive to what we were trying to do here, I believe. And, um, I just see the law being very vague in a lot of areas. Um, everything you guys talked about, I know we talked about the public hearing as far as accessibility, as far as protection of a water source supply. You know, the code basically states is that you have to have backflow prevention or it doesn't get into for a portable water. Doesn't really get into, uh, the type of, of water, uh, supply lines you can use, the source supply lines. Exactly. I mean, when, when I look at this as a whole, I understand that it's to help out individuals, um, so families can help individuals. But I think in a lot of ways, this actually opens a door for a lot of, because a lot of things that can actually hurt people instead of helping people, you know, a lot of that. I don't, uh, I don't really care for it myself, and, um, I guess I would, uh, I would, um, agree that we try and opt out of it.
If we're on cohabitating, if we're in there.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I know we have, we have good, uh, facilities here. We're very fortunate in our city to have as many as we do, um, to, to help individuals if the families can't help. And, um, I think that's maybe better for our community, um, and, uh, with the, the new law that's going to come into place, I'll do so. And with that said, I have to have Mary.
Okay.
Uh, read the, um, ordinance, and Mary, what we'll do, the ordinance is we'll just get the actual number to get an ordinance number on there. So, we want to, uh, check.
Whereas on May twelfth, two thousand sixteen, Governor Dayton signed into law the creation and regulation of temporary family healthcare dwellings, codified as Minnesota statute four six two point three five nine three, which permit and regulate temporary and family healthcare dwellings. Whereas subdivision nine of Minnesota statute four six two three five nine three allows cities to opt out of these regulations. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Peers ordains as the ordinance is hereby adopted, which reads as follows. Opt out of Minnesota statute section four six two point three five nine three subdivision one. Pursuant to authority granted by Minnesota statutes, section four six two point three five nine three subdivision nine, the city of Peers opts out of the requirement of Minnesota statute four six two point three five nine three, which defines and regulates temporary family healthcare dwellings. This ordinance shall be effective immediately upon its passage and publication. And it was approved by the majority of the city council of Peers on this eighth day of August, two thousand sixteen.
I make a motion that we adopt that ordinance.
And I'll second that.
There is a motion on the floor to adopt the ordinance, um, this was statute, uh, four six two dash three five nine three and a second. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, next item we have is a TIP kind of, uh, update from, uh, Jason with David Drangin Associates.
Is this, uh, specifically, Mary, is this the resolution or just an update?
Uh, actually, this is going to be, we don't have an actual resolution drafted for this as of, as of right now, so we will have to move forward with the resolution.
Yeah, we do, we do have a resolution. Uh, Kari received it here this morning, so I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
That just implements TIP District one dash ten, creates, uh, creates the, the tax increment financing district that was discussed or heard at public hearing here previous to the council meeting. So, that's the, the simple action we have tonight. Following the action of the council, if, if the TIP district is created, we will put a standard, uh, terms letter together that just outlines the use of the increment between the city and EDA. It helps guide city staff in the future as increments collected and what should be paid, what shouldn't, and, and all the, the admin retention and that. So, uh, that letter would be the next step, just, uh, formally binds the obligation, creates an obligation of the TIP district, and then also provides guidance to staff as they use that, so.
Okay. Uh, Jason, you want to kind of explain to the public how this works with the, uh, EDA again, like we talked about in public hearing?
Sure. This TIP district's being created to, to assist or reimburse the EDA for site improvements that are related to the new clinic. Uh, down at the, it's a two-part cell TIP district, uh, the old bank building and the, uh, house adjacent to it. Uh, the EDA has agreed to, uh, abate the site that, my understanding, there's some environmental, uh, review that has taken place, and there's been some abatements that have been identified, and that process is, is ongoing. Uh, the EDA's next step upon approval by, uh, Essentia will be to begin the teardown and removal of the two facilities. Uh, the, my understanding, the agreement between the, the EDA and, and Essentia is that the EDA will basically level the lot, have it prepared for construction, uh, at that time, and just turn it over to the, to, to the clinic to, to begin their expansion or, uh, new facility. So, uh, the EDA has disclosed that, uh, that they, they would request that the increment be used to reimburse, uh, those activities. So, basically, all this increment does is create an obligation to use the, the new value associated with the clinic to reimburse the EDA for those activities. Once those, the EDA's reimbursed, um, the TIP, TIP district will be decertified and becomes back on the next wall, so.
Good, thanks, Jason. Council, have any questions about, um, the new TIP district? If not, we will need to approve the resolution, um, creating the new TIP district, which would be one dash ten, uh, would be resolution number, and please excuse me if I'm wrong, two zero one six dash zero eight. Uh, we will need a motion to have that approved.
I'll make that motion to approve TIP, TIP district.
One, one dash ten.
One dash ten.
Yep. Motion on the floor from Don.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mary. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Jason, thanks a lot for all your guys' help on this project. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and, uh, just a, just a quick update. We've, uh, completed the two thousand fifteen TIP reports on your behalf. They've been submitted to the state as recorded by August first. There are a couple of action items, uh, that the council should, should consider. Uh, I talked to Kerry here before the meeting, and I think we'll, it just has to be done by the end of the year. So, maybe in, come around November, I'll come back to the council and just talk about what, uh, there's a, there's a TIP District, uh, one dash seven. The obligation's been expired. It's a housing TIP district, so you have some flexibility to support other housing needs if you so choose. Otherwise, you can decertify it. So, that's, there's just, we'll have that conversation with the council. If there's, so, if there's, uh, some housing needs, maybe the thing as a council, as you, as you move forward and we look at November, if you think of some housing needs that, that can meet the, the, the TIP statute around housing development, uh, certainly, there's going to be some funds that are to be used. Otherwise, it may be in the best interest for the city to, to decertify it. So, we'll have that con- conversation in November, and then we can move towards the end of the year to close out that district if need be, so.
Very good. Thanks again, Jason. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
We got a couple of things here on mosquito spraying charges. Kerry, what are we running into there? I had a couple of individuals that have contacted me in the last few days since, uh, our new electrical billing came out. I think there's a little more clarification that people maybe didn't understand with the old type of billing. So, I, I've heard everything from, you know, why am I paying for mosquito charges? I've never, the spraying, I've never had to pay for them before to, um, one question that, that came up, I think raises a valid point that I'd like the council to take a look at, is when, when we approved the fees, um, I'm not sure what the exact wording was, but somebody had brought it, actually, a couple of people had brought it to my attention then. When we approved the fees, it was supposed to be approved for each, um, home, each individual, um, or each home was supposed to... Well, and, and we went to electrical meter, and I don't, is that what we had in mind when we, when we passed that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Everybody who gets an electric meter gets an electric bill.
That's how, that's how we do that.
Right.
So, the question came up is to where, is that fair that people who maybe have a multi-housing unit, um, only have one meter? So, they only pay one charge, and, and let's say they have thirty people living in their building versus, um, somebody who might have two meters, um, let's say on a house and, and a garage, they would get billed double for that same service.
Well, it's, it's anybody who gets an electric bill. So, don't all the people in the apartments get electric bills? Their landlords does not pay their electric bill.
No, they only get one. We only bill them once.
Like Meadow Pond's, Meadow Pond's only receives one master bill. Um, whereas if you look at Country Place, all of the people who live in Country Place all pay.
Yeah, that's what we're running into.
So, you get Camnet.
Well, Camnet, everybody, Camnet pays.
Camnet, all forty units pay mosquito spraying. In Meadow Pond's, there's one mosquito spraying.
But Meadow Pond's is an assisted living more than a, more than a...
But I mean, for an apartment. There's some residential houses that have one meter in the garage, one meter on the house. They get two electric bills, they get two mosquito spraying.
They, 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 they pay double the charge, versus somebody else is not paying anything.
Right.
Has it always been that way, Kerry?
Yes.
Just now that it's been itemized out.
But you, now, and it's always been, itemized out, bills have always been that way, um, but it's always been coded. Where with Banyan, now with the new software system, everything is spelt out. So, they actually see on there instead of MS or whatever it was for mosquito spraying, they actually see mosquito spraying. And so, people are questioning it and really looking into it a lot more than they did before.
Or nothing's really changed.
Nothing has changed. Yep, correct.
What was the, you know, that we approved, was it like twenty-five cents or fifty cents?
They pay a dollar, they pay the little fifty a month.
Dollar fifty, dollar fifty a month, yeah.
Is that every month, there is a dollar?
It's eighteen dollars a year. Is there, is there a mosquito spraying fee?
Well, it's worth eighteen dollars.
It is, and since we're doing it every three days lately, it's really worth it.
Oh, the bucks, yeah, the bucks have been unbelievably bad this year.
It's not so much a question on paying for it, even the people who own the complexes that have, um, you know, multiple houses and, and the, the tenants are all paying it. It's more so a question of, is it the proper way to bill it out? They don't care paying for it, from what I've read.
No, they, they, like, this is...
It's, should it be billed out a different way?
I guess when we started it, we talked about how to bill it out the fairest way. And because sometimes you have renters, sometimes you have landlords, sometimes you have this, sometimes you have that. And in the end, I think that's how we came up with doing it, like we do the garbage and the electric. It's per that bill because we felt that was the most fair way at that point is what we had come up with. Because trying to figure out who owned what and, you know, every other month that switches or, you know, this one is gone this amount of time, whatever, I think that's how we ended up where we were at with it.
Yeah, I don't think we ever, at least I never really thought about, you know, um, one electrical meter taking care of, you know, twenty or thirty units or something. I guess that didn't even cross my mind.
And I guess for the most part, most, most of that is an assisted living.
Yeah, or, or that type of, you know, nursing home assisted living.
Because we knew that the apartments, you know, we knew that those apartments, that would be, I don't know.
Well, what I'd, I'd like to do is be as though, um, Don is, is, uh, that's a kind of a public works thing. Don, Don's on a public works commission. I'd like him and Bobby and Mike to maybe take a look at that and see if you guys can come back with some type of recommendation at the next meeting or maybe the first meeting next month or something. And if there, if you guys think this is really the, the way we should be doing this, and, and it's just going to be too complicated or it won't work to do it another way or something, that's, you know, that's fine. But why don't you guys just take a look at it and see if you can come up with something different, or we need to come up with something different. We'll, um, awesome. Online bill pay.
So, with Banyan, we have the ability to put, um, an online bill pay. I mean, it was a service that you guys said that we wanted to provide that we paid for, um, for them to set us all up. Um, so, we can get that rolling. Uh, my questions are more so fee-related. Um, there's different ways that we can go about it. We can have the customers pay the fees that are associated with it, the city can pay the fees, or we can split it. And so, I didn't know how you guys really wanted to sell that to us. So, if they, you know, because we'll get a credit card terminal here in the office, so people can come in and they can pay here. They'll be able to pay online, they'll be able to call it and pay by phone, um, and all other sorts of whatnot. So, um, like, there's a service implement fee, and these fees are ones that the city would pay for. It's a one-time or monthly or annual, depending on what the service is. Um, but the, like, the service implementation, so getting us set up to do it, that's a one-time fee of one hundred forty-nine. Data sharing, so creating the specifications, developing all the interfacing, all of that. It's one-time fee, they're waiving that for us. Um, any support maintenance fees, um, is monthly. However, if we set up the e-billing, um, it's waived. Um, otherwise, it's fourteen ninety-five if we don't, which if we, I think setting up e-billing would be crucial. I mean, I get a lot of requests for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the e-billing is monthly of thirty-nine ninety-five. There's a credit card terminal of monthly, um, which is four ninety-five with the purchase of the credit card terminal, which is two nineteen, and that's a one-time fee. Um, so, like, there are a lot of fees as far as transaction costs go. If the city pays all the fees, it's fifty cents, um, per check, like, online check that they would pay with. Um, or it is fifty cents per credit card plus whatever the credit card company charges for their swipe fees. Um, for a phone call-in, it's seventy-five cents, um, whether it's, um, credit card or check. There are fees, again, associated with the credit card. Um, if they call the actual company call center, it's a dollar fifty for them. Um, a lot of call centers will, when they, when you call, they'll ask, if it's a dollar fifty, do you want to be switched over to the automated system? And then you don't have to speak with somebody to do it, so that's back to the seventy-five. Um, if you, the city pays the check fees and the customers pay the credit card fees, then there's, it kind of reduces, and we don't have to pay as many fees. It more so is just going to depend on whose responsibility we want to place that on. A lot of companies, I know Minnesota Power, I have them with my residents, and anytime you go online or you call in and pay, they relate those fees to you. Um, so I need to, it's like three bucks or whatever to go online or to pay by phone. You can send in a check, you can drop a check out in the mail, whatever, that's no charge, just like we have currently here. Um, and I know a lot of other companies that operate that way also as well. You're going to call in and pay, or you're going to pay online, or do whatever, you're going to keep your front fees. So, and that's something I think would be, I see both sides to it because then the city doesn't have to take on that responsibility, and the people who want to pay online can pay on.
Can't pay for it, can't pay for it.
Right, and they would be the most responsible for those fees, so.
I hope you guys think...
So, you pass thirty-nine ninety-five a month, correct?
Right, so it's thirty-nine ninety-five a month to do the e-billing, which includes, um, the creation of the e-bills. So, all I've ever had to do is basically upload them, um, with Banyan into the system, and then it would email them out to anybody that has an email on file. Um, it archives them for up to twenty-four months, so they can go back and look at their old bills, um, which is beneficial. Um, and it also gives them email notifications. So, like, if you're, it'll tell you, it'll email you and say your bill is ready to view, you know, your statement is done, whatever.
So, if they opted for the e-billing, you would no longer send them a paid bill.
Correct, they would not have to receive a paper bill, which would save us most of the chi.
That's fun.
Right. Yep.
Do these people know that they can do automatic payment?
Yes, I put it on the bills every month. So, people who don't have automatic billing, it comes across the bottom. You can sign up for automatic payments at City Hall every month, so.
I'm just thinking, yeah, I don't know, I put it, it's probably, what, three hundred and fifty dollars to set up, right, the one forty-nine and then the two nineteen?
Um, yep, so you'd have the one forty-nine, um, and then you'd have the e-billing, which is forty.
And then two nineteen.
Yep, the two nineteen was by the machine, which I've had a lot of requests for in general, just to have. A lot of people will come in and, oh, I didn't get, grab cash, I gotta go get cash. Okay, I can't fill my bill today, I'll go pay it next week, and then it doesn't get paid, it gets forgotten. People whose, um, family members who've lost a loved one in town, and they're clearing out everything and taking care of all that, they'll call if they live out of town, can I pay by phone? Then I can just be done with it. Unfortunately, I don't have a way to do that right now, so.
It's definitely, you know, we, um, I guess, uh, we're probably a little stuck back in our...
We're behind.
Be high in the way we...
We just got banned.
Yeah, and the nice thing, too, is with that, I don't have to enter, take the time to enter all those payments. All I have to do is click a couple buttons, and it will automatically apply them to the accounts. So, the deposits will all automatically be made. Um, I don't have to sit and spend the time doing that, so.
Well, I mean, I definitely see a time savings for us.
Yep.
And I see a big convenience for the public, getting a lot of different options and ways that they can, they can make that transaction. I think, uh, it's a good deal, especially if, if the public is willing to, after we would pay, let's say, the setup fee, if they would be willing to, you know, pay the additional fees onto that transaction.
And it's the same as when you go to the ATM, it says, you're going to charge you a dollar or a half or three dollars.
If you want to use that convenience, you pay that convenience.
If you know that, because it'll tell you before you make a payment, you're going to charge you that sum up for doing this transaction, you can still opt out of it before you ma- hit that last button.
Yep.
So, I guess that's up to them, if they choose to do it that way, they at least have that option.
Absolutely. What do you guys think?
And it would be interesting to see how many people actually utilize the service, you know, to, if we have a lot of people in the future who are utilizing that service, from the sounds of it, we can always change who pays those fees as well. So, if we got a ton of people and it's more of a convenience, and the city says, hey, a lot of people are utilizing this, let's get rid of that fee for them, then the city takes that on, that's another option, too.
Sure. I don't know, I like to, I don't know what you guys think. I think this definitely makes it more convenient for the public, and it could save us a little time and, and money in the, in the process, right?
Yeah, and we have paid for the setup side of it with Banyan already, so now we just have to pay the setup side of it with the actual company, it's, our, feeding the terminals and feeding everything, set up online, so.
What do you guys think, Chris?
I guess I would make the motion that we go forward with it, with the individual paying the cost that he uses. Which would be, whatever it was for...
Whatever, right, it's like fifty cents or seventy-five cents, and then that credit card transaction fees, so.
Motion on the floor, any other discussion?
I don't too well. I'm coming across the street, but I know there's a lot of people that like that, that convenience or like the, the e-billing so that they just can email and can take care of it that way and stuff. So, I guess I'd make a second.
In the future.
I mean, I...
Yeah.
We have a present problem.
So, we end up with our share.
I think this word's a little...
I do a lot of, you know, automatic debit, most of all. And it is now, you just still get a bill or you get an e-bill, and then you just deduct it. So, there's no transaction, I know of that, so, yeah.
There is a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Peers just walked into the future.
No, we walked into the present, that's all. Probably still behind, but...
Is there a middle of a hole there?
Yeah, exactly.
Um, building permits.
Building permits, we have one for Graham Hoisele, it's for a fence to be put up with the stipulation that there has to be a gate put in between the garage and the back lot line, the west lot line. And that, that's the only thing we have that has been approved.
Oh, it's a four-inch fence?
Four-inch fence. Too late for a four-inch.
Somebody made an extra line there. Four-foot-high fence, I take it, Don?
Four-foot, okay. Or it's a trick fence, it's, it's only four inches.
The guy's name in the back looks about four feet.
We need a motion to have that approved.
I will approve the pass.
Motion on the floor by Mary.
I'll second.
Seconded by Stephanie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, our new city administrator hiring. Um, I know the city council has went through painstaking hours, um, reviewing applications and resumes and interviews and second interviews and, uh, things of that nature. That's really tough. Uh, we had some, we had some good applicants, so we had a, a really tough time of trying to come to, um, a consensus on who we thought would be, um, best person to try and drive our city in, into the future. And, um, they said it's been, uh, it's been a tough process, and, um, we did offer the position to a lady by the name of Nicole Norland, and, uh, she has accepted the position. And she will be starting, um, roughly the... And she has accepted the position, and she will be starting roughly the last Monday or Tuesday of August. She wanted to give a three-week notice, so that's where we're sitting right now. So we will need a motion if the council chooses to make that hiring.
I'll make the motion that we hire.
There is a motion on the floor by Donnie, and a second, seconded by Mary. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Carried unanimously. Just kind of a update on the old bank, and how that and the dwelling to the north of it is coming. Our asbestos abatement group, which is Echo Northwest, has started the abatement today. They should finish up, their plan is to finish up by the end of the week. Unless something comes up, I would say that Echo should be fairly easy for those folks, so. Yeah, so it's coming along.
Removal of all that needs to be removed, and the demolition will take place after that.
Exactly.
The windows and all, whatever they were saving.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll keep moving, because.
Are we interested in that Pierce Gulf Course line on the north side?
Yeah, I'll be taking.
I'll take care of that.
I just saw that the other day.
Bob's on.
I'll operate.
We can have Dave put them up in the air with a bucket. Oh, that's right, Bob's got his own bucket truck. Yeah, so that's, that's starting, and the project is coming along to our, I don't think we'll have any problem meeting our September first goal, so. Yeah, it's just kind of a, just kind of a rundown. We have some department reports from Bobby Yope. Good evening, Bob.
I just wanted to give the council an update on the street project, Edward Street and Third Avenue. The Mill and Place is complete on Edward Street, and then Third Avenue, or Third Avenue South, the Batumis is gone. Subgrade dirt work is done, storm sower is done, and curb and cutter is probably sixty percent done. So what's left is the pet ramps and radius work, and then the paving, which is scheduled for next week. So August nineteenth is our substantial completion date, which is paving, not necessarily seeding, but after paving, we black dirt and seeding.
Yeah, it'd be nice to get that first layer cut out.
Right, that's always.
No, we aren't waiting all year, though. We're kind of doing the, the back-to-back or whatever.
Right. There's a sewer service line on Third Avenue South that the homeowners wanted to replace, and so Ripso is actually working with them. So it's actually gonna be seen as a change order inside the construction, but it's gonna be a hundred percent Ripso cost.
Okay.
Ripso is gonna pass that on to the, the homeowners there, so.
Okay.
So there was some deep cutting there, you know, eight, ten feet to get that sewer line in, but we're gonna have compaction tests done on that, so. Rather than having Tri-City mobilize next spring for that half a block, we're just gonna pave everything.
Okay.
And with that compaction test, hopefully.
Oh, yeah, it'll look nice once that, once that first layer is done, and we get everything seeded and black dirt done.
We haven't heard much for complaints as far as dust or anything, so.
I've heard of one.
It's been good.
Other than that, that usually tells you that things are going pretty well.
Right, exactly.
All right, thanks, Bob.
Thanks.
Carrie.
Um, I was able to sit through the Banyan training. I was the only one who was able to attend on Thursday, so I will train down Linda and Nicole from here on out. So that, for fund accounting, so that went fairly well. I'm entering all of July's stuff currently, and then we will go until July, and move into August.
Okay.
So I've been entering August stuff as much as I can as we go. The systems are all communicating nicely, so that's really nice and helpful, so.
Good, awesome. Thanks, Carrie.
You're definitely seeing the benefits of paving compared to.
It's amazing compared to C-10 cubic, yeah. The benefits have been phenomenal.
Good, I'm glad it's working out. You guys are liking the program. Did anybody else have anything, or anything I've forgotten? If not, are you looking for a motion to adjourn?
I'm adjourned.
Motion for, by Mary, to adjourn.
I'll second.
Seconded by Stephanie. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Carried unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
It's just, it's just. So quick, look at the, look at our, like, everybody's. Hey, Jason. Yeah, well, that too. Every old folks gonna be like this.